Good evening. I'd like to call the very, very 2020 meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Will all those who are able, please rise for the pleasure of me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is people of minutes. I know there was a revised page before that may count. Is there a moment? Yes.
There. I had one change that was substantive that I didn't have a chance to get to the clerk. It's on page 12.7 in the first paragraph. It refers to the second sentence per the city's charter. Council has 30 days, February 12, 2020. Disobeyance, not 2002. We want that reflected appropriately, just a little bit.
I would be trying to guess. Mrs. Thomas, will you make the call? Thank you. Okay. Is there anything? Is there anything else with regard to the seven minutes before us? Okay, is there a? Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of January 22, 2020?
Seven.
We have a motion by Mrs. Blankel, a second by Mrs. Purdy. If there's any discussion, and seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
All right. Very good. The minutes are passed. The next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. For total time allowed, 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by Council Ordinance Number 91-25. Is there anybody here this evening who would care to address the city? And if so, please come on up to the podium, state your name, and address for the record, and be heard. Yes, you're welcome to come on.
Good evening, everyone. We are here representing the John Carroll Student Government. My name's Conley. I'm the Chair of the Community Relations and Service Committee. We're just here to introduce ourselves and say hello because we hope to at least somewhat work with the city council in the mayor's office this semester and this year to further relations between the John Carroll community and the University Heights community as a whole. So these are my committee members who will introduce themselves.
Hi, my name's Jack Gibba. I'm a sophomore representing the class of 2022.
I'm Kelsey. I'm a freshman representing the class of 2023.
Kelsey, which was?
Yeah, sorry.
Hello, I'm Maria Cacklin. I'm a freshman this year, and I represent the class of 2023.
I just want to say that I hope that we'll be able to address any complaints between the University Heights community and students and vice versa over the course of the next year. And if anyone has any complaints from residents or wishes to bring it up with John Carroll Student Government and the students directly, please contact me. I have a sheet here with just my statement and my information. I have copies for everyone if you want them.
Sure. I think everybody would be happy to know how it reads. I'm sure that we will hope to have reasons to contact you beyond.
Yeah, if there's anything other than complaints, I also love to do anything that would be any sort of community outreach or anything like that. If anyone's interested in something like that, please contact me or vice versa. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'd like to give a nice minute.
Thank you, course. All right. Is there anybody else this evening who would care to address the city? Going once, going twice. Very good. The next item on the agenda is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. One week from tomorrow, I will deliver the state of the city. We will hold the address at the Jardine Room at John Carroll University on Tuesday, February 12, 2020, 7:00 p.m. The public is welcome. That includes our friends who were just here. We hope that, I hope to see you there. Coffee and desserts will be available. I will be looking back on the accomplishments of our city in 2019 and previewing what lies ahead in 2020 and beyond. As the Finance Director Dennis Kennedy will report, we are finishing up administration's proposed budget. We had some Internet service disruptions last week that affected city operations from fire to finance. It was, I was at City Hall with a Wowtech for over three hours on Saturday, ensuring that our equipment was ready for resolving an update that Maria put out that apparently didn't take and disrupted not only City Hall service but service to four nodes in University Heights, or so they said. While continuing to work through the weekend and finally today, we seem to be back up, and we are making up for the lost time. We have, we will have the proposed budget and supporting documents and statements out in time sufficient for the Joint Finance Committee, a week prior to tonight. Most of what's left is the proofreading of the supporting documentation. While not much time has passed since our last city council meeting, I'm going to be address, and while I'm going to be addressing the city at length on February 11th, there are a couple of items I'd like to report on. First, I attended the first meeting of the year of the Cuyahoga County Mayors and City Managers Association. I regularly attend these meetings. There were some matters we discussed, and I will cover two of them here. As mayors, we issued a memo of concern to the Cuyahoga County delegation in the State House and Senate to take action on the Ed Choice expansion with then the deadline looming of February 1st. Some action was taken in the form of Senate Bill 120, which provides some funding for the expansion while extending from February 1 to April 1 the opening of the application period for the new Ed Choice applicants. I want to be clear that in my view, we are fortunate here in University Heights to have so many options for the education of our children. The choice of where to send our children to school is a personal choice, one that will be different from family to family and sometimes even from child to child within the same family. I do not seek to end the end of the Ed Choice scholarship. I do seek reform in how they are funded, and by extension, how public education is also funded. I called on our state legislature to finally heed the state Supreme Court ruling from 23 years ago now that found the system of local property taxes to fund education to be unconstitutional. The property owners of University Heights need some relief from local property taxes. But until we move on from this inequitable and unconstitutional form of education financing, we have no choice but to protect education locally and ensure its funding under a different system. Our state senator, Sandra Williams, sponsored the bill with the plan to shift the Ed Choice scholarship funding to the state where it belongs, a state program with state funding, and lift the responsibility of that unfunded mandate off of our local school districts. The Senate was prepared to do it, the House was not. Columbus has given itself two more months to make real reform. Our representatives are fighting to do that, and mayors and officials like me are supporting them in their efforts. I'm doing that because in light of the school levy on the ballot next month, residents have been asking me, what can you do to lower our property tax burden, especially when they know that I support the school levy? The answer is, and has long been, real reform in education funding and taking those concerns to our representatives where they can relay them to the rest of the state and let them note that the current system hurts communities like University Heights and Cleveland Heights. I know it can be done without taking away the choices our families take for granted here in the Heights, no matter where they send their children to school. The second item. As mayors, we move to support Issue 33, the Health and Human Services Levy. It is a .8 mil increase, representing an increase of $41 a year for every $100,000 in property value. Our meeting and vote of support just happened to be right after the Greater Cleveland Partnership registered its support. This from an organization that has been critical of the level of taxation in our county and local communities, but for good reason. One in three people in the county use Health and Human Services each year. This levy will help the county continue programs to reduce infant mortality, respond to the opioid crisis, get more people into mental health and addiction treatment, divert people into treatment in lieu of jail, and help older residents age in place, which is an increasingly important issue here in University Heights. Speaking of that, Mike Cook and I visited a senior resident last week who has lived in University Heights since she was six months old. Today, she still lives in the house her parents bought on Fenwick in 1938. This month, she will turn 82 years old. For 81 and a half years, her home here in University Heights is literally the only home she has ever known. The reason for our visit was bittersweet. We came to pay our respects for her husband, Jim, who had passed away last month after a long life filled with successes and service and children and many friends. Several neighbors on the street contacted us at City Hall to let us know. For residents who have been here a long time, if they don't remember Jim Russo, they may remember Jim and Angela's restaurant, the Aurora Restaurant, which was located on the north of Center Road where the Rascal House is now. It used to seat over 90 people. Their famous dark brown meat sauce is still sold today at Jack's Deli. At one time, Jim and Angela lived in that home, with five daughters, and Angela's mother, and the live-in maid, a total of nine people. A pre-war home, not much larger than the one my wife and I share now. But as we listened to Angela and her daughter Debbie, we could feel the love, the memories of Christmas Eve dinners with family and friends, of neighbors gathered on the porch in the spring and summer, of block parties, of children who grow up and move out of the house but never completely leave home because University Heights is so much more than home. Thank you. This concludes the number. The first item on the agenda is Resolution 2020-08 honoring Black History Month, February 2020. We've distributed a resolution for all council to consider signing together with the mayor. I have one prepared for signature provided there are no changes, and often we waive the reading of these, but on occasions like this, I think it's important that these things be said, so please bear with me while I read them. 2020-08, a resolution honoring Black History Month 2020. Whereas the story of African-Americans is one of resilience and perseverance, tracing a people who refused to accept the circumstances under which the greatest majority arrived to this continent, who resisted the struggle through slavery, emancipation, Jim Crow, the modern civil rights movement, and onward through today. And whereas 2020 marks the 65th anniversary of Rosa Parks refusing to surrender her seat on a bus which launched the Montgomery Bus Boycott and sparked nationwide efforts to end racial segregation of public facilities. And whereas 2020 marks the 55th anniversary of the Salma to Montgomery marches and Bloody Sunday, when civil rights marchers led by John Lewis and Reverend Isaiah Williams were beaten by Alabama State Troopers and county posse at the Edmund Pettus Bridge, which fueled the effort to introduce and pass the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And whereas Black History is American history, and in the celebration of Black History Month, we celebrate both the unique aspects of the African-American experience in this country and the remarkable contributions of African-Americans to the nation and culture so that we all may carry appreciation, understanding, and celebration into the rest of the year. And whereas during Black History Month, we pay tribute to the contributions and accomplishments of past generations, and we reaffirm our commitment to keeping the American dream alive for generations to come in pursuit of the righteous cause of a nation that is more just for all people, to address the inequalities and injustices that remain, and to the birthright promise of freedom for all people that hold that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Now, therefore, be it jointly proclaimed by the mayor and resolved by the City Council of the City of University Heights, Ohio, that Section 1, we call upon all residents of University Heights to observe the month of February 2020 with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in celebration and recognition of Black History Month. Section 2, we reaffirm our commitment to justice and against illegal discrimination in the City of University Heights, Ohio. Section 3, it is hereby founded and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance of all legal requirements. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time allowed by the law. There a motion or any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm so happy that you wrote this. I'm proud to be a signer. I think this is crucial. I've been so proud of the diversity here at the table that our council represents, but Kelsey is one of those who believes this shouldn't be a month. This should be a celebration of all peoples, all different kinds of histories, all kinds of different stories throughout the year. So for me, the section you wrote that most resonates is the section where you said, "We all may carry appreciation, understanding, and celebration into the rest of the year." Because it's not a month, it's all, it's on, it's on. Thank you. And I'll make a motion that we pass this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt by Mrs. Purdy. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Gould. Is there any further discussion or comment? Seeing none. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. It passes. I have a ceremonial copy here for everyone's signature. I suppose it's not the true, only ceremonial, but it's the top. Yeah, why don't we take two? Thank you, Members of Council. The next item on the agenda is Item B, an ordinance, 2020-06, reappointing Stephanie D. Scalise as prosecutor and assistant law director, authorizing a contract for compensation. This is on second reading and emergency, and I would note that Mrs. Scalise is here. And Mr. Conley, do you want to be the honors of this party while this is back on our agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason this is back on the agenda, Council members, is because upon review of the charter, I confirmed that a two-thirds vote is necessary both for suspension of the reading rule and for passage. So while we had the two-thirds required for suspension, we did not have the two-thirds required for adoption because Mr. Gould elected to abstain. So while we did have a unanimous vote, it was not a two-thirds vote at all of councils, so we are back on for second reading. And fortuitously, Mrs. Scalise could attend tonight, so she can be sworn in upon passage.
Let me note that we, as you all recall, we are down one council member, but also six that are here are here to guide, so we have a possibility of being in the pass-through direction of the two-thirds. Is there any discussion or motion that we'd like to make?
Mayor, I'll move adoption ordinance 2020-06 on emergency.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Purdy to adopt ordinance 2020-06 on emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Get a second by Mrs. Wise. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll first on the suspension? Because we're on the second round. We're on the second round, so we won't suspend just to prove an emergency. Okay. So we just need to call. So we don't need to do an emergency, because we only need to affect ordinance, so we only want to do the suspension. Perfect. Okay. Very good. Then, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on the main motion?
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Very good. Motion carries, and Mrs. Scalise, if you would like, I can swear you in now. But you're here.
Let's do it.
All right.
It's gonna be the first time I dance through swearing, too.
Well, it won't be for me, but I'll give.
Yeah, let's not do a photo, let's do a video.
Purdy, you want me to swear?
All right, are you able to raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, and then the question is, aye, state your name.
Aye, Stephanie Scalise.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
In my role.
In my role.
As prosecutor.
As prosecutor.
And assistant law director.
And assistant law director.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
For so long.
For so long.
As I may hold.
As I may hold.
Such position.
Such position.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And congratulate.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Letter C, ordinance 2020-02, authorizing the Director of Finance to disperse a 27th payroll commencing in 2020. This is on the second reading. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is second reading of the council's authorization to pay folks for that extra pay period. That was discussed at the Finance Committee several weeks ago. Just the way the calendar falls, every 11 years, this happens to be the year that we have one extra pay period, so as opposed to having any kind of furloughs or layoffs. Those last two weeks, we wanted to request the council authorize that we have the ability to pay those employees for that extra pay.
Okay, happy to answer your questions. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy on the closing ordinance? Does anybody have any comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-02, authorizing the Director of Finance to disperse a 27th payroll commencing in 2020.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Wise to adopt ordinance 2020-02, authorizing the Director of Finance to disperse a 27th payroll commencing in 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Purdy. Any discussion or motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries, and ordinance is passed. Next is Letter D, ordinance 2020-03, revising the general fund carryover balance policy for the City of University Heights. This is on second reading. Mr. Kennedy, you want to get up and talk?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is second reading. This will set the reserve carryover requirement of 15% of the previous year operating revenue recorded in the general fund. This is to assure council and administration that, so it says that we will be prudent about reserving fund balances and only dip into those values in the case of really unforeseen circumstances or emergencies. This is consistent with GFOA policies, anywhere between 15 and 20%. I think 15% would give us adequate reserve to carry forward here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Yes, Mrs. Purdy.
I want to thank Mr. Kennedy for this and the next ordinance, for setting this up. This is something we've talked about off and on for years, but had no real guidance and had no real help from the current, her prior finance directors in setting something like this up. But we always believed this was critical for the health of the city and wanted to see it done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Any other comments? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-03, revising the general fund carryover balance policy for the City of University Heights.
Very good. We have a motion by Mrs. Wise to adopt ordinance 2020-03, revising the general fund carryover balance policy for the City of University Heights. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rock. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankel?
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Rapp?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries, and the ordinance is passed. Next is Letter E, ordinance 2020-07, creating, and follow me here, creating a payroll stabilization bond. And this is on second reading. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. This bond will be set up to accumulate reserves so that in the event of the next occurrence of the extra pay period, the city will set aside a set amount each year so that when that year arrives, there's no undue impact on the current year budget as we are going to feel this year. This year, it's going to cost the city roughly approximately $380,000 more for that extra pay period. If we accrue money over the next 10 years, the only impact in that year will be a small year of balance installment. So we have also included a proposed transfer amount in the. So we have also included a proposed transfer amount in the budget for this year to start the funding of this particular fund. It is a fund that's allowed by the revised code. We do not have to submit it to the auditors for approval. And I'll probably be back at some point. I think we discussed also at the Finance Meeting a few weeks ago that the possibility or probability of using this fund to pay off leave balances for terminated employees, I'll just need a little more time to get that functionally operative. But that also will take out the impact, the annual impact to departments when you have either planned or unplanned retirements. I mean, those can be very expensive based on leave payouts. So what we want to do is also, one of the other things you're allowed to use this fund for is to accumulate reserves so that when that happens, those are paid out of those reserves and not out of your general fund operating year to year. So it levels out your operating expenses over the long term. It makes things easier to compare year to year. So as I said, I'll be back with that policy at some point later in the year.
Mr. Mayor? Very good. And Mr. Gould? When you asked Mr. Kennedy about this ordinance, you were sure to emphasize the word account over fund. I just wanted to see what, if any, legal...
Fund.
Definitely. Or what is, as presented, it's currently in account. I just wanted to ask you, and perhaps Mr. McConville, what the importance of the word fund over account was, and perhaps a modification is necessary, or a motion to amend is necessary?
I'm assuming it should be a fund. It is going to be a separate fund outside of the general fund. It's not going to be an account. That'll protect it as a reserve in the future, so it can only be used for the purpose it's established.
Mr. Mayor, and to clarify also, I have here, and I don't have copies, but if anybody wants to take a background, if anybody wants to see it, it's the same as in your packet except the finding of place has been done, removed the word account throughout, and the word fund appears wherever the word account would appear in the proposed 2020-07. So it also may be defer to, when I read Item E on the agenda, I'd use the word fund in the reading. Do we need to do a formal amendment here?
I just recommend that we do approve the amendment.
Okay.
I think that there is a substantive distinction between an account, which I think is referring to a bank account, versus a fund, which is really just a mechanism of the city's accounting.
Do we need to do anything on emergency if we intend to go into effect there, or go into effect as we're on second reading?
Yes, it'll still be on emergency as long as we...
It's not on emergency, if we're making an amendment, that doesn't...
No.
We're still on second.
So, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to amend ordinance 2020-07 to change the words payroll stabilization account in the title of preamble, paragraphs one, three, and four, and section one, anywhere else where it exists, from payroll stabilization account to payroll stabilization fund.
Very good, we have a motion by Mr. Gould. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion on the motion, would that be? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll on that one?
Mrs. Michael?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardey?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Ra?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good, so the amendment passes. Thank you, Mr. Gould, and that leaves us with the amended 2020-07 ordinance, creating a payroll stabilization fund with work out, changing the fund route. Is there any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? And if not, is there a motion?
Also...
Very good, the motion adopted by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardey?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mr. Ra?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Very good, ordinance 2020-07, amended, passes. Next item on the agenda is a motion to hold executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personal real estate matters. I have nothing to bring to the council on this juncture for executive session unless the council is something that we wish to take to executive session. I would suggest that there's nothing to move on at this point. Saying none, we will, there will be no executive session following this meeting. Return now to reports. First, Finance. Director of Finance, Dennis Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned earlier, we're working on completing the administration's budget mission to actually wrap up the important aviation issues for all of the internet packages back in order. Just want to make sure the integrity of the data is still there, before we can start things. So look forward to be presenting that to the council and to Finance Committee and the Advisory Committee that evening next week. As you're aware, I believe the auditors have started work. There was a little scuffle in the entrance conference. They presumed that we were going to waive the entrance conference, even though we were never asked. So we are going to schedule that, and I'll make that open, an open invitation to members of the administration and council probably sometime later this month. But they have agreed to do that, and I don't anticipate that to be anything out of the ordinary standard procedural meeting. We issued W-2s and T-99s last Friday, which was the January 31 deadline, to get those produced and out. Also, thanks to Denise and Rita in our office who did a lot of work to get those things done, especially given some of the IT crisis that we had. I'll be setting up some training over the next couple of weeks for, there's a report writing module that we paid for for the accounting system that got installed, but nobody knows how to use. So I contacted the vendor, and they're going to give us, me, 10 hours of training on that, and I order two at a time over the next two or three weeks. And ultimately, that'll help produce information not only for the council, but for the citizens, and I want to be able to put some things up on the webpage. Right now, it's very convoluted how the report writing goes. This module is very good. Anybody who's had any experience with like crystal reports, it's very similar to that, a lot of graphic capabilities, so I'm looking forward to getting started on that as soon as possible. I'll be working over the next month or two on updating employee policy manual. Also, I'll hope to bring forward to council a fixed asset policy, which the city really doesn't have right now, and continue to update, as I said, things on the website to make it a little more functional. So for that, if you have any questions, I'll have January financial reports at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kennedy, Mrs. Weiss?
I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Kennedy on the record for his guidance and his leadership. This is something that we have all been, we've all wanted for, you know, the past many years and much, so thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jerry. Anything else? Saying none, we will move to Director of Law, Mr. Gould.
Just a couple of items, council. First is, just to update you at the request of council, I had the pleasure of meeting with Councilwoman Blankfeld and Councilman Gould to discuss open records law, or I'm sorry, public records law, open meetings law, various parliamentary matters, and we had a lively discussion. I hope that they found it beneficial. And secondly, I've been asked by members of council and by members of the general public to research an issue regarding the city's tax credit. And specifically, the legal issue is whether or not an initiated ordinance or an ordinance otherwise adopted pursuant to a vote of the general public can be overturned, repealed, or changed by council. I did a lot of research on this issue. I found one case that's on point from 1946 that appears to remain good law in Ohio, indicating that a council's authority to enact laws in a municipality cannot be overridden ultimately by either an initiative or otherwise by adoption of an ordinance by the general public. And the council would have the right to repeal or otherwise change the law at their pleasure. So while that's certainly bound to be politically risky, given that the general public enacted such an ordinance, it is permissible for council to change the law. And that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you, Mr. McConville. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McConville? Very good. Next on the agenda is public safety. We'll start with Police Chief Justin Hocken.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'll be reporting on two items. The first is regarding operations. We've been coordinating with the Domestic Violence and Child Advocacy Center through Kauai County for some time with the intention to implement what is considered a danger assessment tool in the field for officers when we come about incidents involving domestic violence. According to the data provided by the county, research has shown that escalation of intimate partner violence to a lethal level follows identifiable pattern with identifiable indicators. When we can identify early in the process which cases are more likely to escalate towards homicide, there are opportunities for prevention and intervention. So what this involves is an assessment tool in the field an officer would use and fill out that information based on some of the criteria that is identified that could help law enforcement better provide service to the victim and ultimately also protect the victim further. We're still in the early stages of growing out this tool, resource, putting the form together with the assistance of the county, creating a policy for it and how it's going to be utilized in the field, and then we'll have a training element also associated with it prior to its, as well. Second item to report on involves other type of training. This is specific to suicide prevention training. Just to provide a little bit of information, based on some data from addictioncenter.com in 2018 relating to suicide, 13 out of every 100,000 people in the country died by suicide in the general population, specific to law enforcement, also public safety, first responders to include fire department. Officer.com data indicates that in 2019, 25 out of every 100,000 police officers died by suicide. So the general population is 13, law enforcement is 25. That's more than double the general population, and law enforcement has also become the highest risk of suicide of all professions. And officers three times more likely to die from suicide than those fatally injured in the line of duty as well. However, of the 18,000 law enforcement agencies throughout the country, only about 5% currently have suicide prevention training. I've been working with the county Department of Health, who is more than willing to come out and provide training to our officers, the fire department, as well as probably other department employees. Free training that's portable, that's also recognized by the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. That also allows us to better identify traits and tendencies of suicide to prevent it, but also with specific curriculum that is for law enforcement self-care. So as an administration, we are happy to be pursuing this type of training at the county, and we look forward to implementing this as possible. Please, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chief Rogers. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Rogers?
I'm impressed. Both of those are so significant from a personal standpoint many years ago, and for the admiration and respect I have for safety forces, those are both tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gould. Mr. Gould, do you have something?
Thanks. When it comes to the providing of the services to survivors of domestic violence, who does the policy envision providing those services?
So the policy that's specific to this, what's considered a danger assessment law enforcement, the policy indicated how it's used, who will be contacted. We deal with a victim's advocate, domestic violence advocate at our court system exclusively. So we're always, the policy will again dictate how we use the form and who is to be notified of the form. It involves the court system, advocates, law enforcement in general, again, to get a better understanding and try to implement measures to further protect those that have been impacted.
And on the second item that you discussed, when it comes to the training in suicide prevention, what policies are enacted right now in the department to proactively engage our law enforcement community and first responder community to, you talked about self-care, but for when they respond to a violent situation, when they respond to an injury or a fire where somebody may have been injured, not just a, hey, here, so you can take care of yourself, but here's how we as a community and as a city can take care of you?
Well, I can't say this, for the past year, I've been updating all our policies to Lexi Paul. And just to clarify, was your question regarding suicide prevention in the community when people are dealing with difficult situations?
For specifically the law enforcement community, sometimes with law enforcement training, people come in and they tell our officers how they can take care of themselves. But my question was, how are we as a city taking care of our officers? So not so much the self-care, but suicide prevention in terms of policy and administration?
Well, I can't say at this point we have a specific policy on it, but administratively speaking from the city, we have programs through HR for employee assistance, which is understood in all new hires get the packet that has all the information that, you know, covers all aspects of life. If an individual is having difficulty with whatever it is, our HR through the city administration provides whatever services they would need and get them going in the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gould. Thank you, Chief Rogers. Does anybody have anything further for Chief Rogers? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, Public Safety Fire Chief Bob Urco. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to thank Chief Rogers for his efforts in including the fire department with the suicide prevention. It's also worthy to note that the county offers a critical incident stress management. So if we had a sensitive incident, either in fire or law enforcement, we do have the capability to reach out to the county to bring the CIS and team in for their assistance to talk to our employees. We don't have that in policy, but like police, we're working with Lexi Paul to update our policies, and it'd be likely to include something with the CIS team. Fire Department's having Insurance Services Office come and evaluate us this Thursday. So they come in and give us a public protection classification rating. This determines insurance rates for property in the city. They do this based on a fire suppression rating system, and it looks at eight major categories. So those are communications, fire department operations, staffing, response capabilities, equipment and apparatus, our training program, water supply in the city, and the community risk reduction efforts. So we're looking to hopefully improve our score, and once that is complete, we'll be sure to give you an update. Last thing to report, our home safety inspection program's going to kick off this year. We just started a new partnership with the Red Cross. They're going to be working with us to help us get this program rolled out, and they will be offering a limited supply of smoke detectors to get us going. So I want to thank the law director for helping to get this relationship and the agreement established, and we'll be rolling that out here in the spring. That's all I have to report.
Very good, thank you, Chief Urco. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Urco? Thank you, Chief. Next is the Service Department, Jeff Gordon. It's for you to report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Only one item to report on, and that's our tree program, which is ongoing. We're currently about 75% complete with tuning and removal program. Contractor has looked at several other trees that were not in the program to be removed, and they are recommending removals, so I'll be coming back at some point with a little bit of additional cost for some additional removals. Other than that, open for questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Does anybody have any questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rogers? All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, next is the building departments. Building Commissioner James O'Brans, Mr. McCall's here on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Brans. Good evening, council. The permit statistic report for January, ending January 31st, 2020, was $9,712.90. This compares with last year at this time. We took in $5,639. Last year, out of that amount, approximately $500 was for commercial fees. This year, approximately $3,200 was for commercial fees. This is for $846,000 worth of construction this month, and last year at this time, $376,000 worth of construction. The planning commission will meet this Thursday, February 6th. Also, if you've been behind where formerly the Tuesday morning building stood, you'll notice that the goodwill construction is proceeding for about a month now. The entire rear wall of that building was removed, and the roof and all that system was supported by canopies and by block and tackle, so to speak, but it's being held up. New footers were poured around the rear for the addition that's going on. That block wall is almost completed, and pretty soon you'll see the dock area go in, and then a canopy for the drop off. Our other project, the big project right now is winding down, that's the Cleveland Community MICA on South Green Road. We're hoping that that will be completed within the next two weeks. City Hall repairs are ongoing right now. If you happen to stop by City Hall upstairs in council chambers, outside of council chambers in that area, and also in the bathroom on the second floor, there's some utter damage. The roof's been repaired now, and now we're proceeding to the interior areas. Board of Zoning Appeals will meet next week on the 12th, and the Architectural Review Board will meet next week on the 13th. We met with the ISO representative last Friday, the insurance survey organization. Our report was about 24 pages long, filled with statistics of our department's education, experience, qualifications, the amount of training we do, the number of inspections we perform. They also asked us information as to where our hydrants are located, and thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for your help in determining how much permit fees and other fees related to the building department were accomplished. So, we're hoping that we get a favorable report this time. We still look forward to our best effort. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Just to dovetail on something that you said, you mentioned the ARB and ECA meetings. Just to be clear for the public, we intend to hold those meetings at the annex at 2245 Moritzville. Those meetings are at 8:00 AM, both on both of those dates. And those dates, again, were?
The 12th and 13th, that's next Wednesday morning and next Thursday.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rogers? All right. Thank you, sir. Next up is our city engineer, Joe Chuni.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next, then, is our communications and civic engagement coordinator, Mike Cook. Mr. Cook, you're on the floor.
I was looking forward to a report from Mr. Chuni. I don't know if you guys saw this on Facebook this morning. Joe was one of Travis Kelsey's first coaches ever. When Travis was six years old, Joe was his cycle coach. So, he's too modest to say that, or he knew I'd say it from?
I did. I think he taught him how to hit him. Different kind of football.
You're right. So, my report, I just wanted to keep it to a census. We are applying for a grant from the Cleveland Foundation, and the grant will be awarded between $500 and $5,000, depending on if we're lucky enough to receive that, what we would do with it. Most likely, we would target two hard-to-reach audiences. When it comes to the census, one, our households with $305, and the second would be renters. So, we'll also do that, and if we just get a little bit, maybe what we'll do is use the grant to promote our census videos. A 92 commercial would promote that, you know, with some paid ads on social media. And so, we should hear by the very beginning of March, whether or not we receive that, then we'll move quickly to use the grant to reach out to people in the census.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cook, I had to be absent for two meetings. I hated being absent for those two meetings, especially the first meeting of the year. But as I watched the video and got the shout out from you looking right at the camera, that was great. I just want to thank you very much because it made me feel like I was there. So...
Well, you're very welcome. I knew you'd be watching, and there was no reason to test that theory, but I just saw that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Burge. Anything else for Mr. Cook? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Burge. Next up is economic development, Susan Drucker. Mrs. Drucker, you're on the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just want two things to report on. One is Patrick and I are still continuing our work with trying to clean up the zoning map. That is, again, we're trying to go after that law hanging fruit. We're still focusing on, we have six areas in the city that are zoned U3. Four of those letters to property owners went out today, and so I would hopefully have some legislation for you at the next council meeting on removing the U3 and making that U7 that will comply more with the use of what's existing on those parcels. And then, secondly, as I do my monthly run of office and retail, there's been a lot of information in the newspaper about different retail closing down around our surrounding communities, and our rate, our vacancy rate in the city for office and retail as of January 29th is 5.48%. That's excluding University Square because of that redevelopment, and that is an incredibly favorable rate to have. So, we are still strong in the office and retail area. And, I have a report.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Drucker?
Who wants to ask a question? Thank you. The rate will keep getting better as we develop the other parcels around. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our housing and community involvement director, Patrick Grubin Myers. Mr. Grubin Myers, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Two announcements for you, council, tonight. The first is that there will be a Heritage Home Program information session.
Patrick, I would interrupt you for just a moment, but that's our John Carroll students' column and Janet Kelsey. Patrick was a John Carroll student who came to work for us as an intern, and he's still here. Not a scary offer, but, you know, he came to City Hall, worked as an intern under the previous administration, joined this administration, has been doing great work here for the city, and it all started at John Carroll. So, you know, I wanted to make a special point, point that out for you, and to do that now before he addresses his report. Now, Patrick, after, gone is dogged at, please.
So, we have scheduled a Heritage Home Program information session. This is what we hold annually at the start of the construction season. That is scheduled for April 27th at 6:30 PM at the UH Branch Library. There is a postcard that will be going out to all households in the city that will have that information in it. I just want to make sure to announce that here to you tonight.
And that will be the fourth Monday in the calendar?
That's correct. And the second item is, while the weather is still up and down, a little cold and whatnot, we are in the Housing and Community Development Department starting to think about the annual exterior maintenance program. So, we are getting that together with the letters going out to the community in early March. So, just as a background for those in the audience. So, the city has an annual exterior maintenance program. It's a systematic program that goes through different sections of the city with the aspiration and promise to the community that once every five years, we're touching on your street and your home and just making sure that we're keeping the housing quality up here in the city, making sure that your hard work is recognized, and making sure that someone else is not letting their property slip. But, again, part of the change or part of the benefit, thanks to your help, council, was last year adding the property maintenance grant to go with this program to make sure that when the city shows up with an inspector and knocks on your door and says, hey, you've got some violations, through our notice of violations, we're also saying that for those who are income limited, we are here to help. We're helping, making sure that you're staying in your home and enjoying it, but making sure that the community also is retaining a quality house. So, just want to provide that update. As I know more, I'll be sure to share, but again, we're just trying to look at this year's program and where we'll be moving to.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grubin Myers. Mrs. Burge, you have something?
Well, I was just confirming. So, you don't know what streets were part of the city yet? That's what you're determining?
Correct. So, we have an idea. Part of what I'm doing is just going through and making sure that we're hitting the streets that are next up in our round of rotations. So, I'm just going back through our code enforcement system, making sure that we are in the area that is appropriate. Just doing an evaluation to make sure that we're on the right track.
And you're ready to let us know once you're...
That's correct. My claim is for the next council meeting to have the idea.
Thank you.
I was worried about the same thing in case you come down my street.
Were you looking?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Grubin Myers? All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes the reports of our directors. We now turn to the reports of the standing committees of our city council. We will start with building and housing. Mrs. Blackfield?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackfield. Community outreach, Mrs. Pardis.
Thank you, Mayor. Community outreach is responsible for one of the commissions, the Technology Advisory Commission. I'm starting to pull that together. Part of what this commission requires is an appointment from other boards, the library board and the school board. I do have the appointment from the library board. The director decided she was going to appoint herself because she wanted to be on the commission. So, the school board is discussing it. There are other community members who are interested. We can have those who are outside of University Heights as part of the advisory meeting with us. They would not be voting members, but we can appoint up to 15. So, we are still looking for qualified, interested individuals. It's rather broad for technology advisory. It doesn't have to be IT. We're also looking for people with information in the technology area around law, science, education, consumer affairs, economics, communications and media, as well as IT and software items. As you heard earlier, Mr. Kennedy referred to this several times. We have a real critical need in the city right now to get this commission activated. However, we have to gather the people, and they have to be appointed by the mayor. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we can have appointments prepared and have the first meeting. My plan is to have the first meeting in early March.
Do you have names for Mr. Cook and me, for the people who contacted the city directly in response to our survey last year?
I have one name that I've contacted. So, that's, I'm interested in names. My colleagues can send forward names, please?
Michael, okay.
Of people that you know. And again, 15 of those who sit on the actual advisory, up to 15, will be University Heights residents, but we can have others in the room. And as with all advisories, we're looking to gather information from the vast talent pool we have in this area to help inform what we're trying to do, help inform council and the administration, so that they can make a recommendation that's helpful. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Economic development. We don't presently have a chair, but does anybody from that committee have anything to appear to report this year? Seeing none. Finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a joint finance and advisory committee meeting on Monday, February 10th, at 6:30, and we will be discussing our draft budget. There'll be at least one to two more meetings after that, so we can have it approved by the end of March.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Wood.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Safety, Mr. Rock.
No report, Mr. Blackfield.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Service and utilities, Mr. Wood.
No report.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Wood. And then, committee of the whole, our vice mayor, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, we will be interviewing our candidates for the open position, open council position, and we hope to have a special meeting on February 12th to swear in that.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. We are at the conclusion of our agenda. No, the state stays February 11th.
February 12th.
I think you may have said the 12th. Did I say the 12th? I may have said...
The 11th, if you're being honest.
Yes. The state and the city is Tuesday, February 11th. The special meeting regarding the council appointment is Wednesday, February 12th. If there's any confusion about that, I'm sorry that you couldn't have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. So, yes, the state and the city is one week from tomorrow. The special meeting would be one week from Wednesday. Okay. So, that all said, before I entertain motion to adjourn, I'd also point out that our next regular council meeting is going to be on Wednesday, February 19th, in this room, at 7:00 AM. But that is Wednesday, the 19th, so we're seeing a lot of each other in the next couple of weeks. So, very good. The state and the city is a week from tomorrow, the 11th. Special meeting on 12th, presumably here. Did we nail down where we're doing that?
No, I'll do that.
Okay. We return, and then the next regular meeting is Wednesday, the 19th, two weeks from Wednesday. So, if there is no further business, I would entertain this kind of motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion with Mr. Earl, seconded by Mr. Rock. Mrs. Thomas, we call it rule.
Mrs. Thomas, aye. Mrs. Pardis, aye. Mrs. Wood, aye.
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 All right. Very good. They are adjourned.